Good morning, everyone. Let's just rise in a moment of silence on remembrance of September 11th. Just for those who lost their lives 18 years ago today, the first responders and then all the men and women who served in the military since that day, just a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. The fire department is also hosting some ceremonies this morning starting at 7:40, so everyone's welcome to those as well. Good morning, everyone. It's 7:00 AM, September 11th, 2019, and we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item for discussion this morning is a park region Wi-Fi project, and I will call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro, to introduce that issue. Thank you, Brian. Good morning.
Hey, thank you. Good morning, your honor, and members of the council here. Excuse me. We've been having discussions with Otter Tail Telecom, Park Region Telecom, in regards to some proposals for providing Wi-Fi network throughout segments of the city. DeLagoon's been identified as others and multiple others, but we figured it'd be best to talk about DeLagoon Park, improving that amenity out there. Therefore, Mr. Ken Budd, and I believe others from Otter Tail Telecom are here to give you a presentation on their proposal. If in good order with the council, we'd be requesting you direct the staff, myself, the city attorney, to review their information and prepare a document, agreement, perhaps a lease for this type of agreement that'd be presented to the city council at a later date for final approval, if agreeable. So at this time, I'd throw an order on Mr. Ken Budd for his input on it.
Morning, Ken.
Good morning. Thanks, Brian. My name is Ken Budd, Network Operations Manager with Otter Tail Telecom, Park Region Telephone. So, yeah, we've been discussing this for, I'd say, a greater part of 18 months to two years or so. And... So just the agenda, I just want to kind of touch a little bit about us, who we are, some of the things that we've done within Fergus and the surrounding area within our community, and then kind of discuss and touch on the DeLagoon proposal of what we had talked about a couple of years ago. So, not sure if everybody knows or not, but Park Region Telephone has been around since 1906, so we've been established within this area for quite some time. Now, providing telephone over barbed wire, I'm not sure if that's the case, but for some of us, I mean, there is some truth to that. In 1997, Otter Tail Telecom was produced based out of the Telecom Act of 1996 by the FCC. That enabled us to have a presence here in Fergus Falls, and then we overbuilt Fergus Falls with our copper plant in, I believe it was 1998, 1999. 2001, we started offering broadband services, and since we started offering those services, it's kind of, it's gradually increased, and we've actually, we started turning into more of a broadband company rather than a telephone company. 2007, we purchased Valley Telephone, and in 2016, Rossay Telephone. And today, we serve Fergus Falls and the surrounding area with over 1,000 miles of fiber optics, and we're still putting that into the ground today. Right now, we're really focusing on our rural areas and building out fiber, but where we see opportunities here within Fergus, we definitely take those into consideration, too. So, we are established local provider with voice, video, data, as well as managed service offering. Some of the things that we do within the community and for the city is PR TV1, which offers live sporting events for local schools. Any type of activity, we'll go out and try and capture some of that for our PR TV1. We produce live content for the chamber, so find it in Fergus. We do Craigles and Sports out at Socials, I don't know if anybody's attended that. And then the Otter Tail County Veteran Show. Metro E Services, we provide Metro E Services, Ethernet Services throughout the city utilizing our fiber optic network. We've worked with, worked with the city in designing and installing data and voice termination for the fire department. And then we've also provided Wi-Fi services. We've done Wi-Fi services for the Taste of Fergus Falls, Shop Move and Groove, the City Luncheon that we provide services for. So, this isn't, this isn't our first rodeo in coming in and providing these services. We also do Wi-Fi services for certain resorts, 10 Mile, Rosebud, down by Lake Traverse in Browns Valley. On a wide scale, last year, we built out with SOTA the Speedway, covering that entire area for Wi-Fi coverage, and then Movies in the Park, and then Otter Tail County Fair. And so, really, the total committed cost that we commit in a dollar amount is roughly around $150,000 a year. And those are, you know, those are services that we are willingly providing to our community, and that's just to enhance and better our community. So, looking at the DeLagoon proposal and some of the things that we like to do there from a Wi-Fi perspective is provide coverage at the baseball diamonds. You have major tournaments, things like that. We can provide that coverage there. Campgrounds, there's more demand for having some kind of data services within city campgrounds or within campgrounds in general, as well as the soccer fields, providing coverage there and to that picnic area and playground area. And so, this is just a map. It's not going to give you a lot of detail, but one of the big things I wanted to point out is if you look at the south end of the map, the proposal would be to place a 45-foot pole on the south end of the field there by the soccer fields. We have fiber that kind of goes up, you'll see that little red line. We have fiber that kind of goes right up to that area. We would bring power to that pole as well as fiber to that pole, and then by doing so, what that would do is provide a wireless backhaul to certain areas within DeLagoon Park. Bringing fiber actually into the park would be, it'd be pretty expensive to do. By doing this, we can offer the same type of service at a fraction of the cost by building out a wireless backhaul to certain areas and then distributing wireless to any users that would utilize the system within the park. This one here, my map didn't turn out quite right, but you'll see some red dots on this map. There's, those are some potential areas that we've identified to put either backhaul and wireless access points in those areas to feed the park with wireless. The build is, this type of build is pretty straightforward. It's not really complicated. The biggest, the biggest thing is, is that we would be in need of power and obviously a place to mount, mount these. Normally, we would mount an access point on a light pole because there's already power there, and then we would draw power from that to power our equipment. Services that we would look at would be kind of a pay-as-you-go. That's kind of the standard of how we've done things in the past, and we would be looking at like an hourly, daily, and a weekly. Now, granted, if you're, if you're out in a, if you're out in the park, you're not going to probably spend something on a weekly, but those who are camping perhaps would. And so, that's really kind of focusing on those campers. You know, the, as we, as we kind of build it out, one of the big things that we would look at is, you know, for city events, if there's tournaments, things like that, we would do something similar to like what we've done at Shop Move and Groove where we've mounted access points downtown on the city light poles, and we just kind of open it up and let those users during those events just, you know, jump on the Wi-Fi. You know, right now, on major events, there's not a huge, not a lot of people will jump on that Wi-Fi service, a lot of them will just use their own cell service. However, you know, for data plans, if you're streaming, most people are streaming video, audio, they're going to want to save some minutes, so if Wi-Fi's available, especially the younger generation, I know like my kids, that's the first thing they're going to look for is Wi-Fi to jump on it, you know, to save on data plans and things like that. So, today, you know, we do have an access point that's up on Kirkbread, and, you know, again, we've done Shop Move and Groove as well. So, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. It's not, not a complex, you know, system that we would be putting in place, and these access points are fairly small. They're not very, I mean, they're not going to stand out as they sit there and are mounted on this pole, so.
Thank you.
Questions, sir?
Take questions from the council. Just to be clear, so, right now, there's not, it's not being offered, people don't have to, this is just an added service if people are in the park camping for a ballgame that they can get Wi-Fi if they choose to do so, correct?
Correct.
Jim?
Is that a freestanding metal pole that you're putting it on, or wood pole?
Wood pole.
Okay. But it's freestanding?
It is freestanding, yep.
So, you're just, are you looking for an easement, then, to put that in?
We would need an easement to put it in, yep.
Okay.
And that's what staff, part of staff's evaluation, bringing us back a recommendation, is that what we're looking for? Other questions, comments?
And so, basically, I have a similar question to Jim's. So, you're looking for an easement for a pole, and then you would look to utilize the city electric to power the individual units around the, around the park?
That is correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is there someone like to make a motion that we direct the staff to evaluate the proposal? Scott, thank you. Brent, for the questions, comments? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a dryland hockey training facility, and we have Scott DeBrito and Darren Kriner with us today. Morning, Scott.
Thank you. Mind if I hand these out?
Please do.
Thanks for hearing me today. What the Hockey Association is asking of the city of Fergus Falls is a, sign an interim agreement to connect this proposed facility to the south side of the Fergus Falls Community Arena. It's a dryland training facility. We've entered into a ground lease with the school district for that ground. We'd just like to connect the two facilities together, and it's kind of a three-part ask. One would be to connect the facilities. The second part would be to be able to tie into the sprinkler system that's in the arena already, so we don't have to build our own sprinkler system. And then the third is the mechanical engineer that designed this is saying the most efficient way to heat this would be to pull from the boiler at the community arena, and we would have our own air handling unit in there, our own air conditioning unit. We would hook up our own electricity, our own plumbing water, but he thinks that that's the most efficient way to heat this facility, so it's kind of a three-part ask. And we're just kind of opening up for questions, I guess, at this point.
Sure. Thanks, Scott. Questions? Scott?
Yep, your honor. The only other thing I would mention is we'll have an agreement from them that goes in the packet on Thursday to be at, to be considered at the city council meeting on Monday, so you'll see the agreement that we're actually going to...
And the agreement would be not just the wall, but the sprinkler system and the boiler to heat as well?
Yeah. And their attorney's drafting that now.
Sarah Duffy is drafting it. I think she's going to get a copy to Eric Allgren and then also to Ralph, so...
For Monday night?
About time, right there. Yes, and then the other thing I would mention, too, is we'll have the Port Authority approve that agreement as well. Bill can fill in some more details on that, but the Port Authority technically owns the building because they were the ones who built it, and the city then operates the building. So, we'll have both bodies approve the agreement. Shouldn't be anything major, but it's a fairly straightforward request.
Sure. Is that what you were going to cover, Bill?
Yeah, because, yep, the port owns it, but the city was responsible for constructing it, operating, maintain, any repairs, so that's why we're having both governmental bodies approve it, so.
Scott?
The tie-in to the boiler is actually the school's boiler, the connection point in the arena.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Any other questions? Anthony?
Obviously, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but obviously, who's going to pay for, who's going to pay for it?
We've got, we've let out for bids already. I think we're going to open those up next Tuesday, is that right? And we've got roughly $435,000 raised so far. We just, we don't know what the number's going to come in at. It might be around $500,000, but we've just kind of stopped our fundraising efforts for now until we know what the number is.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Scott?
From the floor plan you've given us, apparently, it's just a single-story building, and it's full of training equipment of some kind, or is it just an open space? What kind of stuff is inside of there?
Correct. Yeah, it's an, it's an open space, other than the bathroom and the mechanical room and the entryway in the, in the, be this, right on the south, well, it'd be the northwest corner of our facility or the addition. There'll be a synthetic sheet of ice in there, some shooting tarps, weight, training equipment. We're going to move the treadmill. We've got a hockey treadmill that's in the school right now. Now, we're going to move that in there, so.
Tom?
I do have to say that I'm just a little bit disappointed because at first glance, when I looked at it, I thought it said Hockey Dairyland Training Facility, and I thought, finally, a sport that I can really get involved in.
We could put a freezer in there and heat some Dairyland bars in there.
A second, more long lines of cheeseburgers?
That works, too.
All right. Sounds good. No, good project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So, the building looks like it goes over the current sidewalk. Will that sidewalk be rerouted to the parking lot, or how does that work?
The, well, there's a sidewalk that comes along that south end, south side of the rink that goes in that south entrance, so that'll still be there. I mean, it'll, it'll probably have to be moved a little bit, I think, Guy, is that a little bit? But, yeah, there'll be a sidewalk coming to our facility and then you'll be able to enter and exit the arena from there, yeah.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to bring this...
I'll offer that, your honor.
Thank you, Jim. I'll second, your honor. Thank you. Justin? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item number three is a road swap and speed limit update, and we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Thank you, your honor. This is in regards to an update from the official road swap between Otter Tail County and the city of Fergus Falls. I believe previously, this was, tried to present this and give you an update on this, but I don't believe we had enough time. However, before you right now is on the map, if you recall, the areas showing in blue lines on these maps once were municipal state aid routes in general, are Otter Tail County jurisdictional routes. Is what Otter Tail did, if we recall, is Casat One, Alcott Avenue, which is a topic of discussion right here, that was an Otter Tail County Casat Route, is now a municipal state aid route along with Cascade Street all the way up to Freiburg. This was, became effective by the commissioner's orders between the two jurisdictions, July 10th, 2019. So, at this time, like mentioned, Alcott and all the streets showing in orange now are all officially under, are designated as municipal state aid routes for the city of Fergus Falls. We've been working with the county, going over, they've done some sign replacements, updates and everything. There's a few maintenance agreements we still have to resolve and a few other things, but as of right now, like I said, they're municipal state aid routes. If we recall, I did some research back from 2015, 2016, in regards to the speed study that was conducted, and the results came back in 2016 for Alcott Avenue, and I don't know if we can... Thank you. It's kind of hard to see and everything, but we do have, is what you can see on, is showing, this is Illustrated, Alcott Avenue running west-east. Turn around, we can see the roundabout. Along Alcott Avenue, we have the speed zones that, along this route, beginning at Martin, moving west up to 45 mile an hour, excuse me, 40 miles an hour, if you're coming from the roundabout. Posted 45 miles an hour, then a speed reduction zone down to 30 mile an hour at Martin. Back in 2016, like we did a speed study results. This was under Otter Tail County's jurisdiction. To, now that it's under within the city's jurisdiction, we have the local authority to adjust the speed limits as we see fit to a minimum of 30 miles an hour. At being that, I guess, we haven't had any official direction. If that is the intent of the city council at this time, I would recommend that we set a public hearing date to get public input if, if that is the intent to reduce that speed limit from 45 mile an hour to 30 mile an hour, and that would be effective from generally the east side of the roundabout to Union Avenue.
Thank you, Brian. Questions from the council? Anthony?
At the same time, is it possible to look at putting a four-way stop at the end of Alcott and Union? That junction is kind of a tough one to get out of, and there's a lot more traffic now going to the hospital. In the morning, there's a lot of traffic goes straight across Union from Alcott and to the hospital, and the road goes from, obviously, being wide to narrow at Alcott, the transition from kind of the north side of Alcott to the south side of Union, of Alcott, the road goes from being kind of the equivalent of flight four lanes down to two lanes. So, you, as you come out of that and you want to turn left with the cars that are parked on the north kind of west side of the road, there's more of a challenge to get out. It's just something that I think we should look at at the same time if we're going to have a public hearing about speed on Alcott. That'd be something else to consider from a public safety point of view.
Yeah. No, I agree. Those types of intersections would take a little bit more time to do a study. We'd hire a professional to do the traffic movement counts and everything that establishes the warrants for the type of devices that are there. We've done, so this is very similar to Vernon and Union, that three-way, and other sections as well. I could not, I'd have to hire a consultant, they'd have to deal the field collection and then do the warrant analysis for that. At staff, we could look at some general things about it, but to switch up the traffic control on it, I'd have to do a lot, a little bit more information, research on that.
The only thing I would mention, too, is as long as we're looking at Alcott, I mentioned last week that I've had people inquire about a pedestrian crosswalk at Martin and, Martin and Alcott, so if we can just keep that in consideration as we're looking at the road as well. Any other questions, Brian? If not, do we have a recommendation to bring to the council to set that public hearing?
I'll make them. I'll second them.
Brent, Anthony, thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Item number four is a business development for Fergus Falls loan agreement or loan discussion, and we'll call on Bill Somer. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. Thank you, your honor. In your packet, you have two loan requests. The HRA does our loan intake for these business development for Fergus Falls loan programs, and these two loans were approved by the Board of Business Development for Fergus Falls, so it comes before you for the final approval, but one to Baja Rentals, a $20,000 loan for seven years at 2%. And then the other one to Zackman Properties for $10,000 at 0% over four years. So, these fall within our development programs. It's our Fund 264 for the city, so revolving loan program, so that's what these funds are for, unanimously approved by the BDFF board, so just coming before you for that approval today.
One question, and maybe Anthony can answer since he's on the board, but the facade, I was always under the impression that the facade loan was always 0%, but I see it's 2%. Is it above $10,000, it's 2%, or how does that work?
It basically is of the higher number and the period of time.
Got it. So, if it's the 10th, up to 10 is the 0%? Any other questions?
Yeah, where, what properties are these at? Just out of curiosity.
Do me that. I can, I can answer. The Baja profit is the old Sky Vision Building, and Zackman Properties is the Fergus Brewing Company, so both, both we felt were in need of a facelift.
Any other questions?
I'll offer that recommendation.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. All in favor of bringing this to the council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Bill. Next item on the agenda is a Prairie to the People grant proposal. I'll call in Public Works Director Guy Taylor. Good morning, Guy.
Morning, your honor, council members. We had been approached by United Prairie Foundation last year to, for them to submit a grant on behalf of the city through LCCMR. They were not successful in that grant, so they had approached the mayor, and we talked about this last week, about a DNR grant that they are going to seek. The grant would be up to $365,000, and it would be for numerous city sites. They would look to restore these city sites to a prairie vegetation state, either grasses or native flowers. We had talked about maybe utilizing liquor store funds, but in further discussion, we thought maybe we would just take funds from the particular fund that that property falls under and pay for the restoration piece out of that fund, but the request is for up to $36,000 to be paid to be the contribution portion of the cities to that $365,000. We've got to nail down the sites. On the map that I distributed this morning, you'll see that they've identified numerous sites, and of all those sites, many of them are not city-owned, so we've got to nail that down and figure out which fund would cover which site.
But just, go ahead, Bill.
Join in a little bit on the discussion of the liquor store funds. It's possible we may need to take some out of that fund, you know, like Guy said, if we're doing something, say, out of the sewer plant area, well, we would use sewer fund revenues to do a matching, so we wouldn't take liquor store funds for that, but there may be some area that we need to use some liquor store funds to transfer. We can afford that at this point. We are planning to take about, just under $600,000 out of the liquor store fund in 2020. I'm transferring it to the general fund to reduce property taxes, so we're, we take a big chunk every year. We were kind of like in 2018 at 585, up to 590, now up to about 600 for 2020. But at some point, I think, working with the council, we should have a discussion kind of, how do we want to use some extra liquor store funds for some various projects? And so, we kind of have some strategy on that, so we'll want to come back and sometime in the future here and talk about that. Now that we've paid off all the obligations that the liquor store fund had, we'll have, you know, some more funds available, not a lot right away because we do have some other items to do at the liquor store, a point-of-sale system coming up maybe in the next couple of years, some building things, but we'll have some funds available, but I think we should talk through that a bit. Yeah, and, you know, we always have a lot of matching fund requests as we, as we do grants, so talking through some of that, but, so we'll probably use some, but we'll kind of evaluate that as this rolls through, so.
And I'd just say, I mean, I think this is a, thanks for all your work on this, Guy. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for the city, not only, obviously, for the environmental impact, but then also working with the National Wildlife Forever and the Prairie, Prairie Foundation, Prairie United Foundation, they're looking at Fergus Falls to become the first Prairie City USA, so I think it'd be a great way to promote the work with, that we've done in the community with the Prairie Whitlands Learning Center, but then also for the taxpayers. Like, this is a project that will pay for, as Guy mentioned, a year and a half, it'll pay for itself in a year and a half, but then every year after that, it'll be saving taxpayers money by not using fuel, mowers, equipment, and then manpower. So, anyway, Guy, thanks for your work on this, and I think it's a great project. Questions from the council?
I'll offer that motion to go through.
Thank you. Anthony? Thanks, Caroline. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Item number six is Glacial Edge Trail. Design contract, we'll call on Ryan Miller. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, your honor. Good morning, members of the committee. Back in July of this year, while staff was working on the submission to the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission for the Glacial Edge Trail, we received a proposal from Hagstrom Engineering for design and development services for portions of the Glacial Edge Trail, including the section that we did apply for, for GMRPTC, but we did not... But we did not really have time to get into any of that in-depth design and development for that section, but staff is seeking authorization to approve portions of this proposal with Hagstrom Engineering for design and development of the south segment of the Glacial Edge Trail. That would be for a section of the trail from the end of the Central Lakes Trail to Veterans Park. So it's the section that would include an upgrade of the Pebble Lake Road Trail and then completing the on-road portions between kind of the Dairy Queen area to Veterans Park. So we have a proposal for that and a proposal then to consider in a future date for Union Avenue, all the way to Fur Avenue, but right now, just looking at entering into this contract with Hagstrom for that south segment. That would be for a total cost of $24,900. And we hope to do this design and development work in advance of hopefully applying for federal transportation alternative funds, again, which we've applied for in the past for this section of the Glacial Edge Trail, but were unsuccessful. We, we needed, they had a lot of feedback that we need to do additional design work and get our more detailed route and analysis done before being successful with that funding application. So this would help us strengthen that application, which we hope to apply for in January of 2020. We would need to submit our letter of intent for that funding source in November.
Thank you, Ryan. Questions from the committee?
Your honor, do we know where we're at with the grant? I mean, do we, do we want to spend this money before we know where we're at with the, with the grant application? Or is it obligatory that we spend the money, spend the money before we know where the grant is at with the LCCMR?
Which grant?
Well, the Greater, the Greater Parks, the trail grant application that we did.
So that application was submitted back in the end of July. That application would be for a separate section of the trail, not the south segment that we would be, but that application, GMRPTC, it is, has been applied for. The district commission meets next week to review funding applications, and we anticipate hearing more on our success of that sometime in October or November.
So these are two entirely different things, is kind of what you're saying?
Yes. This, this, the design and design development proposal I'm requesting here for the south segment from Veterans Park.
Right, so this is the one that's covered by the, kind of the second, the $600,000 grant?
No, no, no.
This would be the on-trail from, or on-road primarily from the Central Lakes Trailhead to Veterans Park, correct?
Correct.
Right, so that, so we're not getting, there's no funding being sought for that?
There will be a funding source through the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program that we plan to apply for. We've applied in the past and have been unsuccessful.
Right.
And the feedback was we needed to refine our plan for that section in order to have a strong application in the following, the following year. So we, we applied for TAP, Transportation Alternatives, I think in 2017. We did not apply last year, and would like to apply again once we can get some more design development done for that section.
Yes, Bill.
So by spending this, this makes us more competitive for that?
Correct.
Grant us, and this would get charged to the project, so ultimately, if we're unsuccessful and don't do it, again, we need to fund this from somewhere when the time comes, but we would upfront it like we've done some other projects, so you know that going.
Ryan, what's the, say again, what's the application timeline for the federal, did you say, for the federal dollars that potentially could pay for this project?
Yeah, they ask for a letter of intent, just that you plan to apply, and that's usually sometime in early November, and then the application is due usually the first week of January. So we have a few months to complete the work.
And then, your honor, Ryan, what, what's the fiscal year on those funds and then their non-match funds, right? It could be strictly a grant with no local match, is that correct?
I believe our last application required a 20% match for the actual construction project for federal dollars.
And we're out to 2023 or '24 now with the federal?
I believe it's '24, '25 now. It's five, I think it's five years out, and this would be a 2020 application, so it'd be, we'd be fiscal year 2025. But you can, we could seek other sources of funding for the match. We could, we could match state or other dollars to a federal grant.
I mean, my thoughts at the moment is I'd like to see where we, we have a lot of projects that we're doing, and we've got, we've got funds for some projects, and, but we haven't actually done any of them yet. And we, yeah, at some point in time, we keep adding all these kind of costs to try to get money, but then we don't, you know, we're not executing. We've got $600,000 for this one, we've got another $600,000 on the dairy property. You know, if, if we add yet another one, you know, how many projects can staff manage, to be fair to staff? And how many, how many projects can we keep asking for funding from but never actually executing? I mean, my, my concern is we're just not execute, you know, we don't actually execute anything. We just keep adding projects, that's all. I would like to wait and see where we're at with this current grant application for, because that's another one that we're going to get. So that'll be three, three projects that we've got funding for, but we haven't actually done any of them yet.
I think there's also a, a committee that's working on trails and potentially a project or sales tax. I think that would, this could potentially play into that, I would think, as well. Again, I think, I hear you saying, Anthony?
And I just think, we've got so many projects in the works that, you know, at some point in time, we have to kind of execute some of them.
So with that group that's working on the trails, when would be, when would you need to have like a yea or nay on the, sending a letter of intent to apply? Is it something that we would, we could wait on and make a decision in a month or so, once we have some more that, yeah, with that trails group?
As far as the Transportation Alternatives grant goes?
Yeah, with, with this.
Like I said, we wouldn't need to submit that letter of intent until sometime in November. I don't know what that date is yet.
So we do have a little bit of time to?
We, we have a little bit of time to make that commitment to apply for transportation alternative funding, but the timing for getting this design and development work would, we'd rather get on a tight timeline if we push that further along. I mean, to get in, you know, if there was a few public meetings that had to happen, which the proposal does include some public, public meetings, we'd be on a pretty tight timeline to get this work done if we delay it much further, but we could certainly do that if you wanted more time.
So what if, what if we move this to the council meeting on Monday? Because I know that trails group is meeting soon, and we could have further discussion about it on Monday?
See what that group recommends for timeline as far as what project they have or don't have, or, at least we can have a discussion on Monday night then, after having input from that. Is that all right with everyone? I mean, if we don't have to have action this morning, we can just have this discussion item on Monday night. Does that work for everyone?
Tom has a question.
Just a, a quick ask. Would it be possible to get a basic timeline of the projects that we currently have, you know, and where we're at in that process? What is the, what's the proposed construction and just a, a basic overview of the next steps of each? And then maybe, you know, and then add this project, potential project in there, you know, overlay that on that timeline so that we would have an idea what the big picture would look like with, you know, notes on funding sources for each, just to kind of clarify everything that, that Anthony was talking about. Does that make sense? Just nothing fancy, just a basic timeline of all three?
And I could certainly go over through, through a basic timeline now, but you're wanting that for Monday?
Something to look at, not necessarily, I mean, for Monday. Doesn't have to be anything fancy, just, just a basic rundown, so that we can see what all of them look like.
Sure, I can certainly do that, but it'd be just kind of on a high level. So we do have two active projects currently for the Glacial Edge Trail. We do have that $600,000 LCCMR grant, and that one would be for construction 2020. There's the hope, we have the request for, I think, roughly $300,000, $300,000 to $400,000 for the GMRPTC, I can't remember the exact dollar amount, but that'd be for fiscal year or construction year 2021. So we have a couple of projects in the next two years. This Transportation Alternatives project would be quite a ways out in the future. Like I said, I think it's 2025 at this point for construction year, so we do have a couple ongoing that will be keeping us busy in the next couple of years, but this TAP, this TAP application would be quite a ways out in the future. And I'll get more, I'll get a better timeline laid out for Monday.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think you're on as well. I mean, I just think, you know, we need to be cognizant of how much money we're spending, because as Bill said, this is cash. And, you know, if these projects don't happen, then it's, it's a direct cost to the tax levy. And, and I kind of like Bill's suggestion of having some discussion and maybe on the liquor store funds, and maybe that's kind of a fund that we, you know, we have a percentage or a segment of that that's used to fund projects like this, you know, where the upfront costs are there, you know, so that, yes, it's a direct cost, but at least we're taking it out the liquor firm, and, and, you know, we do a portion of it or something like that. I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Anthony. Thank you, Ryan. We'll have that, ask that trails committee to weigh in and at least have a, some sort of comment to the council on Monday, and the council can decide what they want to do from there. Thanks, Ryan. All right, Ryan, you're up again with the RTC master plan update.
Thank you, your honor. Yes, the RTC master plan, we're moving forward pretty quickly here. Back in April, City Planner Ryan Veitluck applied for a $20,000 certified local government grant. We have gotten final confirmation and documentation that we have received that grant for 20,000. In the application, I believe the city had a match of 40,000 for a budget then of $60,000 for a master plan study. In the application, Ryan had laid out a process for putting together an RFQ selection and review committee. I've contacted a few members to try to get a committee together the last week of September to look at a draft RFQ and hopefully get an RFQ then out in early October, so that we can review that and get on the, get this master plan moving forward. The timeline written in the grant application was to have this completed by the end of 2020, but our grant agreement from the state came back with the deadline for the, the master plan being July 31st of 2020. So we're on a little bit more of an advanced timeline from the state's perspective to get this done. And I believe Ryan suggested that this could be a six-to-nine-month process, so we're hoping to get moving quickly now on the RFQ development and selection of the consultants. One of the members of the RFQ selection team would be a city council member, so I don't know if we have, if anybody has been selected from the council at this point to participate on the committee, but we would need a representative from the city council to participate. We also have Laurel Kildy from the Planning Commission, Chris Shulkey from the Heritage Preservation Commission, and then myself and Andrew Bremseth on the committee.
I just, I guess I'd recommend that Scott, if you're interested in being on that, I would recommend that you be the one to, from the council.
If you wanted to do that.
All right, thank you. Any other, anyone going to arm wrestle Scott for that one?
No.
Scott's the guy. All right, thanks, Scott.
One other thing also, there would be a second committee, it'd be a working group that would work with the consultants through the actual completion of the master plan. I don't know if the same representative would want to participate on that committee or if you want to have a separate representative.
Make the same committee would be fine. I think that would make sense. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan on that update? Moving on, we have two other items we're going to add briefly. We have an opportunity for a census grant through the Complete Count Committee. Ryan, did you want to speak briefly to that?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Just within the last couple of days, I found a grant opportunity for the work that our Fergus Falls Complete Count Committee is doing to try to spread the word and do some marketing assistance for the Census Bureau in advance of the 2020 census. The Complete Count Committee's been meeting, we've met a couple times. We haven't had a lot of worker meetings this summer, but we're getting, going to get back into it this fall. And there's an opportunity for a small, small grant through the state of Minnesota. They partnered with the Minneapolis Foundation to offer $750 grants to Complete Count Committees. That'll help them with some, you know, minimal printing and outreach and, and marketing. But I wanted to get council authorization to apply for that before we did so.
Any questions?
I'll offer that.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. All favor that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
And then, update on the, Justin, you, update on the aquatics committee? You guys met and you have a slight change from what was discussed at the last council meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, maybe not a slight change, but an addition.
Or slight, a slight, not site.
Yep. So you may recall our last council meeting, it was approved to enter an agreement with US Aquatics for their services. And two sites that were identified that were going to be reviewed was Gerado or Adams Park and East Kirkbride. And we authorized staff to start discussions with the owner of East Kirkbride, and through some of those discussions, we, there, there are a few challenges, nothing that we maybe can't work through. The current owner of East Kirkbride is looking at some options on that land in the expanded district that was taking place, that they had requested. So with that in light of that, we met as a committee last week and wanted a third site to be reviewed. If you recall, in the service agreement, that wasn't the dollar amount of cost for, for US Aquatics and their services, it wasn't tied to how many sites that were going to be reviewed. We made a courtesy call just to verify and make sure that that was the case. And so they, they committed to looking at a third site, and we as a committee are having them look at Roosevelt as a third site to come back with information on. So just a quick update from us, on the three sites that we potentially have something come back before us as a body to, to discuss at a later date.
Okay. Thanks, Justin. Any, Tom?
So Roosevelt, would that be at, at the bottom of the hill?
That's why it's under review.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Scott?
I think if we're going to add sites, we should also add Day Lagoon Park. I don't see why we wouldn't. It's got all sorts of other reasons to be considered, and I think it ought to be considered as well. If we're going to open it up, let's open it up to some other options that really do make sense and were also worth looking at.
Thanks for that, Scott. I guess I'd put that, I mean, I, I guess I'd just direct that comment to the committee and let the committee take that advice and...
I would agree with Scott. I think East Kirkbride's going to be a challenge, challenge site, you know, from, from a ship hull and from friends of the Kirkbride. So I think we should look at options. I don't, I don't see any point in spending money on East Kirkbride at this point in time.
All right.
I'd make the further comment that, you know, I appreciate the work that the committee is doing, but this is the responsibility of the council, and I think we can take ownership of that and say, this is what we want to do, this is what we want to see, not respond to what the committee has suggested only and said, well, that's what they said, and shrug our shoulders. I think that we can add this without it being an issue. I just think it's our job to do that. And to that end, I'd like to make a motion that we add Day Lagoon to the park, to the review process that's being done.
You can motion that we direct that to the council to add, to ask the, to direct the committee to add Day Lagoon as a fourth site. Thank you, Scott. Is there a second to that? Second? Any comments? Caroline?
Yeah, I would just like to respectfully disagree. The committee has done a lot of work on this, and Day Lagoon has come up multiple times. And we're just looking, we're looking at location, too. You know, we want kids to be able to easily walk, bike there, not have to get a ride out there, not have to spend money to get out there. So that's one of the reasons Roosevelt's come up. Another thing to keep in mind is the tight timeline that we're on, and it still has to go through legislation, it still has to go through our voters, so it's not ultimately up to the city council. It helps us with the city council's support, obviously, because that's how it gets to the next steps. But ultimately, our voters will be voting on it, and so that's one of the things that the aquatics committee is trying to keep in mind, too.
Thank you, Caroline. Brent?
What was the reason why the dairy property was kind of taken up as a consideration?
And Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, when, two and a half years ago when we started the process and the site selection, we looked, primarily we're looking at land that we owned, and we didn't own it, that was one. And the second was, was, for authority purchase... And the second was, is, poor authority purchased that and plans to recoup cost is to sell the site for redevelopment, not?
Well, that, the reason why I was getting at it is, we own the sewage treatment plant, which is just down the road, and I do believe we have funds, I believe, I've been informed, we got funds aside to tear that down, and that's, once we do that, we have another clean piece of property sitting down there that we currently own. And I think the acreage would probably fit in there. I understand there's only one way in, but I didn't think maybe there was a way through the existing sewage plant to be able to put an exit going out on the backside. But this is a piece of property that we currently own, puts it in a nice prime location. I just didn't know if there was a reason why it was removed because of it being on the river, and that's the reason why I was wondering.
No, I think part of it was timeline, too. You know, with the cleanup and the demolition and that kind of stuff, with the timeline that the aquatics is hoping to be on, didn't line up either.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further comments, questions? The motion is to direct, or, is motion to recommend to the council to direct this, to the aquatics committee to include a fourth site, that being DeLagoon Park. Correct? Any further comments? All favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Uh, no's have it. Yeah. Rate, uh, on favor of aye, raise your hand, please. Three, five to three, the no's have it. The ayes against have it, sorry.
Come on, Mr. Burke.
Should've called no.
Come on, Mr. Burke.
All right. With that, let's see, any further items to come before the committee? Lynn, do you have any announcements you'd like to make?
Fire hall.
Fire hall events, as we speak, start this morning and they continue throughout the morning. With that, we're adjourned.